Good afternoon. It is now four thirty P M. My name is Tony McCouch and I will chair today's meeting. On behalf of the board and officers, I welcome you to Wallbridge's annual and special meeting of shareholders. I was appointed non-executive chair of the board on April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, to take on the role of chair from Alar Solva. So ever since two thousand and three, Alar has helped to guide Wallbridge through several transitions as an employee, a board member, and as chair of the board. On behalf of my fellow directors, the management and shareholders, I would like to recognize Alar for his many years of service and leadership to Wallbridge. Alar was instrumental in the identification purchase and advancement of the Fenlon Gold Deposit and the acquisition of Wallbridge's significant land position on the Deter Fenlon Gold Train. He has a vast supply of knowledge about Wallbridge's projects, and I am pleased that he will continue to benefit, to continue on with the company, and we will all benefit from his expertise and knowledge as a director going forward. Thank you, Alar. I would also like to introduce the other directors of the corporation who were all virtually present today. They are Mars Court, President, CEO, and Director Sean Day, Parvi Farasangi, Janet Wilkinson, Danielle Gionvenazal, Jeffrey Snow, and Michael Pesner. In addition, all of our executive officers are with us today. Brian Penny, our Chief Financial Officer, Mary Montgomery, Vice President Finance, Attila Pentik, Vice President Exploration, Frank Demers, Vice President Mining and Projects, and Sean Stokes, our Corporate Secretary. Finally, I will take this opportunity to introduce you to Brian Christie, the newest nominee to the Wallbridge Board. Brian brings decades of capital markets and marketing experience, and we look forward to working with him should the shareholders elect him to serve. I am advised that the requisite number of shareholders for a forum is present, and we have the preliminary scrutiny report which indicates a majority of shareholders have voted in favor of each of the resolutions. The final scrutiny report will be annexed to the minutes of this meeting. We are pleased to host the meeting through this virtual meeting platform accessible to all of our shareholders regardless of physical location. There will be a presentation by management and Q and A session after the formal portion of the meeting has terminated. As noted in the Management Information Circular dated April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, this meeting is being held online via webcast. Shareholders and proxy holders have been advised of the mechanics of having their votes recorded at today's meeting. I would now like to call the meeting to order and appoint Sean Stokes to act as Secretary of the Meeting and Maury Winchester of TSX Trust Company to act as Scrutineer of the meeting. So we will now commence the formal business of the meeting. The business of the meeting is described in the Management Information Circular dated April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, which accompanied the notice of the meeting. The notice called this meeting, the Management Information Circular, the notice calling this meeting, sorry, the Management Information Circular and the former proxy relating to this meeting were mailed to shareholders in accordance with the Business Corporations Act of Ontario and National Instrument fifty-four one-on-one, and the company has received a statutory declaration from TSX Trust Company. I will append the statutory declaration to the minutes of this meeting. May I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the notice of this meeting?
I move that the reading of the notice of the meeting be dispensed with.
Will someone please second the motion?
I second the motion.
Okay, I declare the motion carried. The next item concerns approval of the minutes of the last meeting of shareholders which was held on May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one. I would welcome a motion that those minutes be taken as read and approved.
I move that the minutes of the previous meeting of the shareholders held on May twelve, two thousand and twenty-one be taken as read and approved.
Will someone please second the motion?
I second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Sean and Mars. I now declare the motion carried. The next item of business is the receipt of the audited financial statements of the corporation for its financial year ended December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-one, and report of the auditors on such financial statements. The audited financial statements of the corporation for its financial year ended December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-one, and the reports of the auditors on such financial statements are hereby received. These financial statements are available for review on wallbridge's profile at cedar.com and on our website. We will run through each of the items on the agenda in turn. The results of the meeting will be publicly released and will be available on CDR and our website. So the next order of business is setting the number of directors at ten. May I have a motion?
I move that the number of directors be set at ten and nominate each of the following persons to be elected as a Director of the Corporation to hold office until the next annual meeting or until his or her successor is otherwise elected or appointed. Anthony McCouch, Alar Soever, Jeffrey Snow, Harvey Farasangi, Sean Day, Mars Court, Janet Wilkinson, Danielle Germanazzo, Brian Christie, and Michael Pesner.
Okay, and then will someone then please second the motion?
I second the motion.
Okay. As the corporation has not received any advance notice in accordance with the corporation's advanced notice by law, have any other nominations? I declare the nominations closed. Okay? May I have a motion now directing the secretary to cast a single ballot for the election of each of these, those nominated?
I move that the Secretary of this meeting be and is hereby authorized and directed to cast a single ballot for the election of each of the ten directors nominated.
Will someone please second the motion?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mars and Sean. I now declare that these persons nominated to serve as directors until the next annual general meeting of shareholders will be duly elected upon completion of the formal business of this meeting. The next item of business is the appointment of the auditors.
Tony, I think we need to step back and do the setting of directors at ten.
Yeah, well, okay, I recognize that. I think we somehow something jumped there, so I thought. But that's great, okay. Maybe we'll move to set the number of directors of the corporation to be set at ten. Will someone second the motion? Sorry, will someone make that motion?
I move the motion.
Will someone second that motion, please?
I second the motion.
So now, again, going to the next item of business with appointment of auditors, KPMG LLP.
Tony, there's, we have to do a ballot on that.
Yeah, okay, well, okay, I was trying to, trying to be, be, okay, I think somehow we got jumped ahead here, and I was trying to be seamless, but I guess we go back and do a ballot on that. Yes, that's fine. Okay, as of May twenty-two, twenty-two, the total number of votes attached to the shares represented at the meeting by proxy required to be voted against resolution to set the number of directors at ten. Based on the final proxy voting results provided by TSX Trust was more than five percent of all the votes cast at this meeting. Therefore, a ballot must be conducted in respect of this resolution. The scrutineer has identified the holders eligible to vote by ballot and has provided a ballot in advance of the meeting. According to the scrutiny's report, four hundred and seventy-four million, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-four thousand shares, or ninety-two point three percent, were voted in favor of the resolution, and thirty-nine million, five hundred and ninety-five thousand and fifty-three shares, or seven point seven percent, were voted against it. I declare that the election resolution has been passed by the required majority.
I move the motion.
Will somebody second the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Now we'll move on to appointment of auditors. KPMG LLP, the current auditor of the corporation, is proposed as the auditor of the corporation to hold office until the next annual meeting of shareholders. May I have a motion?
I move that KPMG LLP be appointed auditor of the corporation until the close of the next annual meeting of shareholders, and that the directors be authorized to fix the auditor's remuneration.
Okay, thank you, Mars. Will someone please second the motion?
I second the motion.
Okay, I declare the motion carried. And I declare that KPMG LLP have been duly appointed as auditors of the corporation for two thousand and twenty-two. The next item of business is to consider and if thought advisable, ratify and approve the amended omnibus share-based compensation plan as more particularly described in the corporation's management information circular. May I have a motion?
I move the following. Be resolved that the corporation's omnibus plan is set out in the Management Information Circular dated April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Being is hereby approved, confirmed, and ratified. All unallocated awards, rights, and other entitlements under the corporation's omnibus plan be and the same are hereby approved, confirmed, ratified, and authorized. The available and unallocated options issueable pursuant to the omnibus plan are hereby approved and authorized for grant. Any director or officer of the corporation be and is hereby authorized for and on behalf of the corporation to execute and deliver all documents and instruments, take other such actions, including making all necessary filings with applicable regulatory bodies and stock exchanges such as director or officer may determine to be necessary or desirable to implement this ordinary resolution and the matter authorized hereby. Such determination to be conclusively evidenced by the execution and delivery of any such document or instrument and the taking of any.
I second the motion.
Yeah, I declare the motion carried. Thank you, Mars. Thank you, Sean.
That would have to go to a ballot as well, too.
Okay, sorry, as of May twenty-two, twenty-two, the total number of votes attached to the shares represented at the meeting by proxy required to be voted against resolution approving the corporation's ominous share purchase, share-based compensation plan based on the final proxy voting results provided by a TSX Trust with more than five percent of all votes cast at this meeting. Therefore, you're correct, a ballot must be conducted in respect to this resolution. The scrutineer has identified the holders eligible to vote by ballot and has provided a ballot in advance of the meeting. According to the scrutiny's report, four hundred and thirty-six million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and nineteen shares, or eighty-four point nine percent, were voted in favor of the resolution, and seventy-seven million, four hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight shares, or fifteen point one percent, were voted against it. I declare that the resolution has been passed by the required majority. Okay, this concludes the formal business portion of the meeting. May I have a motion for termination of the business portion of the meeting?
I move that the meeting be terminated.
Will someone please second the motion?
I second the motion.
Okay, the meeting is terminated. We've come a long way since the purchase of the original property at Fenlon, and now not only have we identified a multimillion-ounce deposit at Fenlon, but we have an opportunity to grow the Martinier deposit as well as covering other deposits along the more than nine hundred square kilometers of the property covering a large portion of the Deter Fenlon Gold Train. I'll now turn the meeting over to Mars Court, our CEO, who will update you on our progress in two thousand and twenty-one and our plans for two thousand and twenty-two and beyond. Mars?
Thanks, Tony. And thank you for joining us for this year's annual and special meeting of the shareholders. Unfortunately, for the third year in a row, due to the circumstances beyond our control, we can't gather in person. First and foremost, I'd like to express my gratitude to our team at Fenlon Project and East Sudbury. We've kept our exploration programs going, doing exceptional work under the shadow of COVID, and have successfully advanced our projects while identifying significant new gold mineralization at Fenlon and on the D two Fenlon Gold Trend property. Many thanks to all of our employees who've been supportive, resilient, and adaptive. I'd also like to thank the board of directors for their ongoing support that they've given to the leadership team this year and to the company's senior staff who are present today at this AGM. Ryan Penny is our CFO, Frank Demers, our VP of Mining and Projects, Attila Pentik, our VP Exploration, Mary Montgomery, our VP Finance, Sean Stokes, our Corporate Secretary, Carol Evans-Stuffield, our Human Resources Director, and Victoria Vargas, our Investor Relations Advisor. You've all shown tremendous support, and on behalf of myself and the board, I'd like to thank you for all your efforts and commitments. In April of this year, we welcomed Tony as our non-executive chair of our board directors. As a former president and CEO of Kirkland Lake Gold, which recently merged with Agnico Eagle Mines, Tony has a deep understanding of the promise and the challenges of operating in this Abitibi Greenstone Belt. And many thanks to our outgoing chair, Alar Soever, who continues to serve on our board, and his contribution through the years has been significant in creating a company that now controls a district-scale land position along the D two Fenlon Gold Trend. A major structure that hosts the D two Lake Gold Mine to the West with large-scale resource potential and discovery upside to power our future growth. Today, we'll review our two thousand and twenty-one accomplishments and our progress so far in two thousand and twenty-two. Please note that we'll be making forward-looking statements, and I encourage all of you to read our disclosures in our corporate presentation on our website at wallbridgemining.com. Two thousand and twenty-one was a milestone year for Wallbridge because we were able to validate the multimillion-ounce potential of the Fenlon and Martinier project in Quebec with a maiden resource estimate at Fenlon and an updated mineral resource estimate at Martinier. We've now successfully outlined a multimillion-ounce gold deposit of two point six seven million ounces in the indicated category and one point seven two million ounces in the inferred category with a significant expansion potential at both Fenlon and Martinier. We completed a hundred and thirty-five thousand years of drilling last year at these advanced projects. The drill programs within and outside the existing resource footprints have consistently met or exceeded our expectations. The exploration potential of our other properties on this nine hundred and ten square kilometer land package along the D two Fenlon Gold Trend is also starting to shine. Castle, Grasset, and our other gold properties along the D two Fenlon Gold Trend are beginning to form links in a chain which along with Fenlon and Martinier have the potential to become a new gold camp along this belt. Our exploration plans for two thousand and twenty-two are fully funded. In April of two thousand and twenty-one, we completed a twenty million dollar bought deal finance. We followed that up in February of this year with a twenty-nine million dollar flow-through finance. On November fourth of this two thousand and twenty-one, we also commenced trading on the OTCQX market in the U.S., broadening our investor base by providing U.S.-based institutional and retail investors access to our common shares. This combination of successful exploration and financing has enabled us to plan a seventy million dollar expenditure in two thousand and twenty-two with the goal to grow the gold resources at both Fenlon and Martinier and investigate promising targets regionally. Fenlon will account for about sixty percent of our planned drilling. Another thirty percent will be dedicated to Martinier, and the balance is allocated to regional exploration. The two thousand and twenty-two program is also expected to lay the groundwork for an economic study. Sustainability means partnering with our stakeholders to deliver long-term benefits to the communities in which we operate. We recognize the long history and contributions of the First Nations and Métis peoples, and we thank them for their continued support. In early two thousand and twenty-two, we completed our inaugural sustainability report which supports our objectives to create stakeholder value through safe, low-cost exploration discovery, excuse me, in an environmentally and socially responsible manner. This report was published to reflect Wallbridge's efforts towards the responsible development of our projects and set the foundation for sustainable operations in the years to come. We're proud of our team and their achievements in developing meaningful relationships with all stakeholders. Notably, our workforce at our project is more than thirty percent made up of our indigenous peoples. For the fourth year in a row and into the first half of two thousand and twenty-two, we've had zero lost time injuries due to the tremendous efforts by our staff and management at both our Quebec and Ontario operations. In terms of governance, the board committees put a great deal of effort into ensuring we not only meet but exceed the requirements of a responsible and growing company. Our corporate governance and nominating committee meets frequently to update our policies and guidelines. Our audit committee reviews our operational risks and internal controls. Our compensation and human resources committee reviews and assesses the design and competitiveness of our management compensation. And our health and safety, environment, and CSR, as well as our technical committees, both meet frequently with management to ensure best practices are being met and project development is in line with our strategic objectives. To our stakeholders, including our shareholders and communities where we operate, we thank you for your ongoing support. We're excited about the year ahead as we gain momentum on the D two Fenlon Gold Trend and build on the success we've had at Fenlon and Martinier. I now ask Brian, Attila, and Frank to give us an overview of the work done to date as well as our plans in two thousand and twenty-two and beyond. We'll then open the meeting to question and answers, and Sean Stokes will read the questions. Brian, you're muted.
Thank you, Mars, and thanks to all of you for attending our annual and special virtual meeting again this year. I bring to your attention our cash reserves, our capitalization, analytical coverage, and our shareholder base. Starting with cash reserves, as of March thirty-first, we have forty-seven million dollars of cash on hand. In addition, we have approximately thirty-four million dollars of Quebec's refundable tax credits receivable, of which ten million pertains to the two thousand and twenty tax year. We have received virtually all of the ten million as of today for the two thousand and twenty refund, and we expect to receive the two thousand and twenty-one returns, hopefully before the end of the year, as we filed our tax return tens weeks early with the goal of providing Revenue Quebec enough time to complete an audit before the end of the year. Just a reminder for everybody, these tax credits apply to exploration spending not funded by Quebec flow-through shares and are subject to the annual audit before payment. Our planned spending for the remaining nine months of two thousand and twenty-two is approximately fifty-two million dollars. Our budgeted exploration drilling is estimated to be about one hundred and sixty thousand meters for the full year, of which thirty thousand five hundred meters were completed during the first quarter. The funds raised in February of this year combined with our year-end cash balance and the receipt of the two thousand and twenty tax credits provide enough funding for our plans for this year. As of March thirty-first, we had eight hundred and eighty-two point four million common shares outstanding and on a fully diluted basis, approximately nine hundred and six million. Ownership is comprised of Eric Sprots' numbered company owning eighteen point seven percent of the common shares. Kirkland Lake Gold, a wholly owned sub of Agnico Eagle, owns nine point eight percent. Various identifiable institutions own eleven point six percent. William Day Construction, an earthmoving contractor, and Subri owns six point five percent. Management and insiders own one point two percent, and the balance is owned by retail shareholders. We are encouraged for analysts that provide research coverage on Wallbridge. I now turn it over to Attila to provide you with details of our exploration efforts. Attila?
Thanks, Brian. The maiden resource estimate at Fenlon was the first stepping stone in the development of this newly discovered gold deposit. There's a lot of potential to expand those resources to form the basis for future economic studies. Therefore, most of our drilling this year is devoted to resource expansion rather than to convert resources from the inferred to the indicated category. Even at the time of the resource calculation, we had significant known mineralization that due to insufficient drilling density could not be included in the maiden resource. Some of these zones are within the known footprint of the deposit, so adding them into the resource base could significantly improve the economics of the project. Therefore, one of the main focuses of our drill program this year is to follow up on these previous results and complete the required infill drilling to make these zones part of an expanded resource estimate in two thousand and twenty-three. We've already seen good results this year that confirm this potential, like the ones you can see here on this image from the central part of the Fenlon Gold Deposit at shallow depth in areas where the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-one M R E had not calculated any resources. The other way we are trying to add to the resource base within the known envelope is by executing a program of infill sampling of a solid drill core. In the past, sampling of drill holes was often selective, focusing only on visible mineralized zones. Now that the project has evolved to reveal a potentially bulk-minable resource, we have reason to believe that there could be considerable further gold mineralization that was not included in the maiden Fenlon Resource System. For this reason, in two thousand and twenty-two, we intend to sample up to tens of thousands of meters of previously unassayed core. In addition to increasing the resources inside the current footprint, we will continue to investigate the expansion potential of the Fenlon Gold System both laterally and at depth in several directions, including over a one kilometer distance south of the resource into the Ripley Zone located along the Sunday Lake Deformation Zone, where recent drilling has shown very positive results. The Northwest and Southwicks extensions of Area Fifty-One and along strike of the Tabasco Cayenne. The current resource envelope extends down to one kilometer vertical depth, and the one deeper hole drilled so far revealed the same hole strikes and gold mineralization styles at a vertical depth of one point five, one point six kilometers. This year, with all the lateral expansion potential that we discussed, drilling at greater depth is not a focus for us, but it is good to know that this future resource expansion potential exists at depth. Systematic exploration is an iterative process, and therefore, much of the two thousand and twenty-two drilling will be results-driven, and we will continuously reevaluate the allocation of drills based on their exploration success to achieve the largest and highest-quality gold resource. This targeting will benefit from improved assay turnaround times, which have been seen in recent months. Due to several initiatives implemented with our assay labs, such as a designated lab facility exclusively processing Wallbridge samples, we drastically reduced the turnaround times for an average of approximately three months to a more usual interval of about one month. Martinier is our second large gold deposit. Given that it is within trucking distance of Fenlon and therefore could possibly be processed at the same central facility, it may be included in future economic evaluations of Fenlon. We only started exploring at Martinier last summer, but the initial drill program of approximately nine thousand meters completed by the end of the year has confirmed our optimism and led us to devote a much larger two thousand and twenty-two drill program over approximately forty thousand meters to this project. There's a large two-by-two kilometer known mineralized system here that has only been drilled to maximum vertical depth of four hundred meters. In the current resource estimate, the deposit is separated into multiple isolated zones, resulting in several smaller open pits. We believe this is mainly a result of a lack of drilling between the zones, and therefore, our focus this year is to establish the connection between these zones and discover additional zones. This is expected to result in a much more improved configuration for the next resource system. Our initial drill program has already started to prove up this connectivity between the mineralized zones with good intersections in the area between the Martinier West and Bug Lake North zones. There's a lot of room for expansion along strike in several directions with no mineralization that just did not have enough required drill density to be included in the two thousand and twenty-one resource. As mentioned, drilling to date has reached only a few hundred meters below surface, as you can see on these vertical long sections of the Martinier West and Bug Lake trends. We see excellent opportunities to extend the known shoots at depth, evidenced by these intersections we have attained in two thousand and twenty-one. We now have three drills turning at Martinier, and we are looking forward to seeing this deposit grow considerably and proving up its real potential. Even though exploring and developing our flagship Fenlon and Martinier projects is our main near-term objective, we're also devoting approximately ten percent of this year's drilling budget to regional exploration. There's potential to establish a pipeline of future deposits elsewhere on our D two Fenlon Gold Trend land package in this emerging mining camp. Stretching ninety-seven kilometers east-west along the Sunday Lake Deformation Zone from the Ontario border, where Agnico Eagle's Deter Lake Maya is located, this district-scale land package is underexplored. In contrast to over hundred years of exploration and mining in the southern Abitibi, much of the northern part of this belt is covered with overburden that hit gold mineralization from prospectors and past explorers. We view this overburden cover as an enormous opportunity. Our exploration success at Fenlon and Martinier have already demonstrated the kind of discoveries that are possible in this belt using current technology in a well-funded and well-executed exploration program. In the summer of two thousand and twenty-one, we ramped up our regional exploration in search for new zones and satellite deposits near Fenlon and Martinier that may have synergies with a future mining operation centered on Fenlon. Our initial programs at Grasset and Castle intersected new gold mineralization while testing grassroots targets that showed similarities to our known gold systems. This year, we will follow up with further drilling and grassroots exploration to prove up new discoveries and unlock the potential of our extensive land package. I now turn it over to Frank to provide you with an update of our operations.
Thanks, Attila. Attila touched on the efforts of the exploration team with respect to advancing, expanding, and improving the quality of the mineral resource. In recent interviews presenting updates on our activities, we've discussed the underground mining potential at Fenelon. Although we still have many questions to answer about the open pit potential, it's obvious that the resource is amenable to underground bulk mining operation. With that in mind, we keep our options open, ensuring the work we do supports all avenues for project development. Perfect timing. There goes my dog. A key metric that stands out with the resource is its ounces per vertical meter endowment. We can see here that the resource's average is nearly twenty five hundred ounces per vertical meter, today with room for growth. And the core of the deposit, which has a footprint of approximately six hundred and fifty meters by one kilometer, averages about thirty five hundred ounces per vertical meter. This demonstrates the sheer quality of the deposit. I'll give it two seconds. The current role of the operations team is to support safe and planning execution, safe planning and execution of our exploration program as part of the broader team. Since we have a large project and our resources are shared and spread across the whole Detour Fenelon Belt, the operations team leads and coordinates the execution of drilling activities in close collaboration with the exploration team. All this with a view to operational readiness. This means the team's work is not limited to drilling and exploration. It's also focused on doing the work today that's needed in the future to support development and ultimately gold production. We're deeply connected with the local communities where we operate. Partnering with First Nations communities allows us to create long-lasting, inclusive, and sustainable value. Therefore, I want to take this opportunity to thank our First Nations community partners of Wascagenish, Washe'asibi, and Abitibi Winnie for their ongoing support and collaboration as we work to advance our projects on the Detour Fenelon Gold Trail. Without their support, none of our work would be possible. As Mars indicated, this year we published our inaugural ESG report and provided, to provide transparency on our sustainability initiatives and reflect the company's commitment to social responsibility and environmental stewardship. In this respect, the operations team is focused on a few key areas. Environmental baseline studies and stewardship, consultations with First Nations and local communities. And recently, we began a project of strengthening our health and safety and environmental management systems. We've partnered with NORCAT and SOFI to build robust systems that will support the company's advancements of our project, supporting training and development of our internal talent and set ourselves up with risk management tools needed to safely execute our projects into the future. Thanks very much. Thanks, everyone, and my apologies for the background noise.
Thanks, Frank. As you can see, we have a large underexplored land package in one of the safest jurisdictions in Quebec, Canada. This land package is already three large gold systems identified with room for growth at both Fenelon and Martinier, and more importantly, the potential for more discoveries to come. Our current program is fully funded, and at the completion of this program, we may be able to advance the Fenelon project to economic studies and readiness for development and ultimately to production. I now open the question and answer period by asking Sean to read the questions. And I will either answer the questions or ask one of the management members who are present here to answer.
Thanks, Mars. So we, we do have a few questions. There's a question regarding potential divestment of the company's nickel projects.
Okay. Look, we understand the value of the nickel and PGM assets in Walbridge, not only at Gresset, where we have more than five and a half million tons of greater than one and a half percent nickel, but also our large land package in Sudbury. With respect to the Sudbury assets, there have been in the past many joint ventures on these projects. They need to, they need to be unencumbered, and that's exactly what we've been working on. And once that's done, we'd be in a position to be able to vent or an alternative way of getting value for it. With respect to the Gresset, it's very close to Fenelon, has the gold exploration potential as we disclosed in many of our interviews. We've also earned this social license to operate, and we want to make sure that any third party will steward the same relationship with the communities and with the First Nation partners that we found. So any arrangement for Gresset would have to include those mitigating factors. So over the last eighteen months or so, we've been communicating with various groups to evaluate the structures that can address those concerns and also beneficial to our shareholders. When we get there, we'll announce that. So as of today, we don't have any update on that.
Another question, Mars, relates to plans for funding the twenty twenty three program.
I think as of March twenty, March thirty first of this year, we had forty seven point three million dollars in the treasury, as was reported in our first quarter results. And as Brian mentioned in his presentation, we also expect to receive the refundable tax credit from the Quebec government by year end. So based on the current budget and without any additional funding, that, that sort of leaves us with about twenty million dollars to start twenty twenty three. Now, we always try to minimize share dilution to be, you know, at least, at least dilutive as possible. And that's why we take advantage of the Quebec super flow-through funds that typically provide you with a significant premium to the market price. But having said that, amid the current market sentiments, we're also reviewing various alternatives to achieve our planned milestones with less expenditures so as to allow us to end this year with more than twenty million dollars and, and going into the twenty twenty three program.
Okay, Mars, there's, there's a couple of questions that came up relating to insider purchases of, of stock in the market.
Investment in Walbridge or any company is a personal decision of the management and directors. But despite the certain restrictions at various times of the year for officers as well as the directors, over the last twelve months, most of our directors and managers have either participated in financings or purchased shares in the market. Then we continue to believe in the company. And when possible, we certainly participate in that kind of a financing or, or in purchasing of the shares.
Another question has to do with whether or not the company has considered a share consolidation.
No, we do not have any plan for share consolidation at this stage.
There's a question just has to do about executive compensation, if we have anything to, to share on that.
Our compensation committee of the board reviews and assesses the design and competitiveness of the executive compensation. They're based on annual objectives that are set out at the start of each year. And I refer everyone to our information circular, which has that in detail explained.
Thank you. There's a question regarding Tony's role on the board.
Well, I know Tony is here, but certainly Tony has been our non-executive chair since April of this year. And we're certainly very fortunate to have Tony as our non-executive chair. You know, he brings a vast experience in building successful companies to our board. And we are, you know, we, we, we'd like to certainly take that opportunity and use that towards the development advancement, advancement of our project in this Abitibi Greenstone Belt.
And there's a few people asking, Mars, when, when we'll put an asset into production?
That's the question that we want to answer as soon as possible. Obviously, our twenty twenty two exploration program is the next step in answering certain questions about the resource. And, and you know, the configuration of that resource, whether it's in a, you know, mainly an underground operation or an underground component with, with some open pit or a large open pit. And we look forward to getting that milestone achieved and then moving that to an economic study in the near future. And any production decision will certainly follow those studies.
Good. Thank you. There's a question of asking why Eric Sprott didn't participate in the most recent.
Eric is an investor and has his own reasons, which we're not aware of, and we can't speak on his behalf.
Okay. D two East. Question about why we haven't issued any, any results from the D two East drill program.
So the operator of the D two East project is Agnico, who is, had marriage with Kirkland Lake Gold. And, you know, completion of that exploration program is at their discretion. And really, the completion or carrying out with the option agreement is at their, you know, is at their control. We only released results that are material to Walbridge and grassroots exploration program that was conducted by the partners may have not warranted a press release so far. And for the same reason, we haven't been announcing the drilling results of our other option partners working on the Basher Fair property. It is their prerogative to be able to, to, to deliver those results if they wish to do so. And so, so if management believes they're important, they certainly will share that, and, and so will we.
Okay. There's a question relating to the, the MRE and projected pit in that, saying that it's a, it's a large pit. And is it economic? It seems deep and has a high ratio.
Sure. By definition, a mineral resource has to be economic, and that's, that's, you know, that's part of it. Having said that, one of the reasons for this year's program is to improve the quality and the quantity of the mineral resources at Fenelon, particularly, you know, with respect to the near surface portion of that resource. So our maiden MRE, which really means the first resource estimate was done at Fenelon, and we understand that a good portion of the higher grade material at depth between around three hundred fifty, four hundred meters down to six hundred fifty meters where the, where the pit depth was, was, was basically within that deep shell, deep shell of the pit. And as a result, the pit shell itself got wider. So, so in the next update, with the expansion drilling around the existing resource, the near surface mineral resources can be more confined maybe to shallower open pit or perhaps a couple of smaller pits, and the rest of the mineralization can be in an underground bulk mineable resource scenario. So our current mineral resource estimate, we know, as Frank mentioned, is already a robust bulk mineable deposit underground. But we need to better define the near surface material, and therefore we can actually come up with a project description that can be carried into an economic study. Now, maybe I'll let Frank explain that a little better, maybe with some analogs to, to, to our project.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Mars. Yeah, you know, if, if you go flip back to slide twenty one, one of the, or twenty one, or twenty, one of the analogs we use obviously is Young Davidson. So, you know, it's, Young Davidson is six thousand ton per day mine. It's eighteen hundred meters deep. The average grade is slightly below three grams per ton with some high production volumes. Now, you know, that's just one of the comparisons. When you look at the resource we have, as I mentioned, you know, it's quite robust. Even at our conservative seventy dollars per ton cutoff, you know, we end up with one point six and in the indicated category and one point one in the inferred category. Now, you know, as Mars said, you know, it's robust, and we could use that as a starting point for an economic study. But we do have a lot of near surface mineralization that, that needs to be tested for its extents as well as some extensions of the Tabasco zones, a little bit deeper, you know, between five hundred and a thousand meters. And if you look at the next slide where you look at the gold endowment, you know, between four hundred meters down to six or seven hundred meters, we've got some pretty high concentrations of, of, of ounces per vertical meter. And there, so there's a lot of opportunity to fill in some of the gaps that, that are left over from the MRE statement. And so, once we've got those answers, we'll be able to really understand the full potential for this operation, whether or not, you know, it, it's a large open pit, a couple of smaller open pits, or just an underground mine, depending on, depending on several factors such as social acceptability. And so we've got to take, take all of those things into consideration when we're looking at that. And this year's program should answer a lot of those questions, which will allow us to carry forward in the future.
Sean, I see a question in here. It says, Attila, what excites you about the exploration initiatives?
Thanks. Yeah, where, where do I start? Well, I think, I mean, just the fact that we have this enormous land package that is very underexplored compared to the southern Abitibis, which we talked about. You know, this world-class potential demonstrated already by, by the, the detour mine. Basically, we took Fenelon from a very small near surface zone to now being, being a three point six million ounce total endowment deposit that still has lots of room to grow. And, you know, it was a blind discovery, and, and so we're very excited about this continued exploration success at Fenelon and, and trying to build a tier one deposit out of it. And we believe Martinere could be the, the second asset. Right now, it's, it's just shy of a million ounces, but we see all the potential for it to, to become much bigger. And then hopefully it can become sort of our next Fenelon, and it's not far away from Fenelon. So the two can add up to, to a very nice mining camp. And then, you know, we're looking at these other zones like, like we talked about, Casso, Gresset. Basically, wherever we go, we were able to make some grassroots. Can't really call it discovery yet, but you know, we're, we're getting really good intersections in our initial drill programs at these projects. So, you know, will this be the next similar mining camp like some of the ones in the southern Abitibi? Well, geologically, it's definitely possible, and, and I think Fenelon has already demonstrated that there's, there's a lot of amazing potential here. So, yeah, as an explorer, it's, it's, it's a beautiful land package to be working on. And so I think that's kind of some of my excitement of.
Thanks, Attila. Yeah, Sean, there is another question in here. It says, the company's market cap has been struggling to find any ground since the GDXJ inception and the MRE. What are the plans going forward to turn the ship around and show the market the company is to be invested, the company to be investing in? I think, I think we've explained the, the plan that we have this year. And our twenty twenty two program is designed to bring us to the, to that milestone that we can carry the project into an economic study. We explained the, the, the current state of the resource. That it certainly is a robust underground, but we need to answer some of the questions with respect to the near surface mineralization. And, and the, the fact that we've now got a dedicated lab of one of our, you know, assay labs that we'd be able to deliver our results sooner, because as Attila mentioned, some of the, some of the work that we're doing is also result-driven. So we're hoping that this year's program with the continuous news flow that we'll have on the results of the drilling that we, we continue to do in this year's program, be able to get us to that milestone. People will understand throughout the year as well as the, at the, at this milestone, the value of the company.
This question here about the merger of KL and Agnico and what it means to, to the company.
Well, the one thing is on share register is changed, name changed from Agnico Eagle, sorry, from Kirkland Lake Gold to Agnico Eagle. They've been just as supportive as Kirkland Lake has been. In fact, it's very obvious that they've actually nominated Brian Christie, who I'm very happy that he's been voted in to be one of our directors. So, so certainly they're very supportive. And, you know, obviously, looking forward to working with Brian on our board and continue to develop the project, not only at Fenelon and Martinier, but perhaps finding other discoveries along this large underexplored land package.
And someone's asking why we're not proceeding with an economic study right now? Why, why do we need an updated resource?
So Frank, do you want to answer this? Because I know you, you provided some, you know, information about it, you know, with respect to the current state of the resource. But you're muted.
Yeah, thanks, Mars. Yeah, you know, as I mentioned earlier, the, there's a couple of key things that we want to get answers on. And one is, you know, the near surface potential, you know, should, should we be looking at that as an open pit or as an underground? Is it continuous enough in an underground format to, 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 to consider it that way? Or should we look at smaller open pits? And there's a lot of drilling that Attila referred to earlier on in his presentation that's starting to expand and extend, you know, to the northwest and to the southeast the mineral resource. And so as we get a better understanding of that potential extension, we'll be able to formulate a plan for an economic study.
Thanks, Frank.
Thanks. And there's another one that maybe Frank might want to weigh in on is just asking with regard to the. And there's another one that maybe Frank might want to weigh in on is just asking with regard to the MOUs or PDAs with First Nations and the status of our relationship.
Yeah, that's a great question. So we, you know, we've, over the last four years, we've developed some really strong relationships. And to this point, there hasn't been a need for MOUs or PDAs or IBAs. However, you know, we are always in discussions with our partner communities and, and definitely, you know, actively discussing those opportunities. And how to formally, or how to formalize things moving forward. So those things are, they're always active discussions and you know, to this point, like I said, the relationship is really strong. We work collaboratively. We actually have, you know, for, for those who are interested, we actually have weekly meetings with each of the communities. To make sure that they understand how we're moving forward, what opportunities exist and, you know, how we can help each other out.
Sean, I see there is a number of questions about the, the trading, stock trading with, you know, algo trading. And obviously we have no control over those. And my answer is that, you know, it's something that we won't be able to answer. You know, as far as the, the trading of the shares by, by various houses or, or the algo trading. So I, I just wanted to address that because there's quite a number of questions like that that has come up. So.
And I think, I think we're, we're coming to the end of the questions. There's, there is a sort of general question about, about next steps, which I think we've, you've answered and also milestones coming up. So maybe that's a good one to, to wrap up.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think, I think throughout the presentation, we explained the potential for growth of the mineralization at Fennelon and Martinier and the promises of new discoveries along the belt. Which is a majority of the 2022 exploration program that we've delivered as far as the plan for it. And we're continuing to implement that. In terms of, in terms of the news flow, I explained that we're going to have a continuous news flow on the, on the expansion. As well as the infield drilling at both Fennelon and Martinier. We've delivered already on our regional exploration. But as I also mentioned, considering the current circumstances in the market, we certainly are very cognizant of the cash that we have at hand. And in order to ensure that we maximize the value from that cash and those funds. And those are some of the reasons why we're continuing to review the milestone that we're going to get to. And how best we can achieve that with the least amount of expenditure so we can carry ourselves more into 2023 without, you know, being too dilutive. So, so those are some of the, some of the work that we're doing and we'll continue to deliver those results. And, and in terms of the valuation of the company, we certainly do not, you know, see the, you know, the, the project be any different than what it was before with this promise to be bigger. But again, you know, we certainly also see the, the sentiment in the market. And, you know, we, we were doing everything we can to be able to get ourselves to that milestone as soon as possible.
So, yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Well, I just want to thank everybody for, for joining us in this annual and special meeting. And I look forward to continued results and I'm very excited about 2022 program and the future of this company. I just want to ask if Tony has anything to say before we leave. You're muted, Tony.
Yeah, I know I'm muted. Anyway, yeah, I know that, yeah, I just say a very well-done meeting. I like the, I like the, the depth of the questions, the amount of questions, good answers. And we look forward as we move forward to having a good 2022. Definitely, you know, we recognize especially with, with the questions from the shareholders. How we got to, you know, do development or extend the shareholder value up to the market so people can see what this company is worth. And, and I know the management team is very dedicated and hardworking and committed to doing that. And, and the board, as, as a board is here to support them as much as we can and to achieve these goals. So thanks everyone for getting on the call. Thanks everyone for listening. Thanks for participating in the meeting and, and good evening for everybody. Thanks.